Let's go ahead and call a meeting to order. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Carwin.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Vice Chair Sobek.
Here.
And Chair Thomas.
Here. We'll go ahead and stand for the flag salute. Hand on your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, are there, Jen, are there any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Anything, okay. We don't have any presentations. Do we have any public comments?
We do not for public comments, just on the item.
Okay. Then we'll move to item seven, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved that we approved the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Nothing on the consent calendar, so that moves us to item 9.1, public hearing for a minor change to number 215-28 tentative track map of 32025 in the Canyon Cove. So, let's see here. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is a public hearing and it's for a minor change to a tentative track map, which is number 32025. And Lisa Gordon, planning manager, is the project manager on this as well, and asked Lisa to review it with the commission, and then would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Lisa.
Good evening. Lisa Gordon presenting the minor change to the Canyon Cove project. The project site is located south of Newport Road, east of Getz Road, and west of Lone Pine Drive. The project site is currently vacant. To the north, there are existing single-family residences, the Audi Murphy Ranch Sports Park and Salt Creek and Newport Road beyond. To the south is vacant land that's designated open space and Holland Road further beyond. Single-family residential is proposed also to the west of the site, and there are existing residents to the east. The zoning for the site is the Canyon Cove specific plan. To the north, south, I'm sorry, to the northeast and west, you have the Audi Murphy Ranch specific plan, which is for residential uses. And to the south is residential agriculture, five acre minimum, and the city of Lake Elsinore Canyon Hills specific plan. The minor change proposes to make some minor modifications to the previously approved tentative track map. One hundred and ninety-eight single-family residential lots ranging in size from a minimum of 5,500 square feet to over 10,000 square feet is proposed with this minor change, and that is generally the same as the original map. The minor change proposes thirteen lots for open space, three passive parks, and the rest of the open space lots would be for landscape slopes and open space. All of the open space lots are proposed to be maintained by the HOA. The previous version of the map had seven open space lots. The project also provides for regional and local trails throughout the map. We have a summary of the proposed changes. The main change is a reduction in the grading from 620,000 cubic yards of cut and fill to 424,905 cubic yards of cut and 533,505 cubic yards of fill. The project also realigns interior streets. The project maintains access points into the development consistent with the originally approved tentative map. The layout is modified, but the edge conditions for lots along Newport Road and the existing development to the north and east is consistent. We are reducing the size of the cut slopes along the southern boundary of the development from what was originally approved, increasing the size of slopes interior to the track, revising the local trails interior to the track. We're increasing the park acreage from 1.4 acres to 1.9, and there are changes to the park and open space lot layouts and locations. This is an exhibit showing the conceptual landscaping, but you can also see the conceptual layout for the, or not conceptual layout, but the layout for the track map itself. There are large slopes. You can see the big portions in green. Those will all be HOA maintained. And there's the three open space passive parks, one on the west side of the project, one on the central to the north portion of the site, and then a larger one on the east portion of the project. The local trails, if you can see the arrow, it starts at the open space area on the west and moves through the site and through the larger passive park and connects to the regional trail, which will be on, that's Lone Pine Drive there, and that connects to the open space lot in the back. This is the first conceptual plan for the smallest of the open space lots. This one is adjacent to Newport Road in the central portion of the site. It includes shade trellis, picnic tables, barbecues, and some open turf. This is the second open space area on the western portion of the site. It's, you can see that the trail starts here, and then it goes east and connects to the regional trail. It has similar amenities as the other passive open space park you saw. This is the largest of the open space passive parks. It also provides for shade areas, picnic tables, barbecues. Some background on this project, it was approved by the County of Riverside Board of Supervisors on April 4th, 2006. Concurrent with the tentative map, the Board of Supervisors approved a substantial conformance to the Canyon Cove specific plan. The Canyon, the substantial conformance modified the originally approved specific plan to eliminate a multifamily planning area, increase the acreage of single-family planning areas, and reduce the overall number of dwelling units from 485 to 198 dwelling units. So it's a substantial decrease in density. Over the past two years, the applicant has been processing their final map and rough grading plans through the city. The city's public works and engineering department was preparing the final map for approval by city council. The final map approval is a ministerial item that's placed on their consent agenda. Rough grading plans had also been approved by the city, but the permit issuance for the grading was pending compliance with all of the prior to grading permit conditions. They had met most of the conditions, though. The developer had gone out to bid on the grading plan, but there was a significant increase in the anticipated cost due to the need for more blasting of rock than what was previously estimated. As a result of the blasting, there would be a creation of more dirt and material that would need to be exported from the site. In order to reduce overall costs of grading, reduce blasting, and reduce export, the developer of the project has proposed the modified map. The modified map results in a significant decrease in grading, which lessens impacts to the existing hillside, air quality impacts, and noise, because there will be less blasting. The map continues to provide trails and parks consistent with the specific plan and creates more view lots. Overall, staff believes that the modified map is consistent with the specific plan, superior to the originally approved tentative map, and recommends approval. If the minor change is not approved, the developer could move forward with the previously approved version of the tentative track map. The developer would be required to comply with the existing conditions of approval and mitigation measures. Regarding the environmental, staff reviewed the previously adopted environmental documents from the original tentative track map. The modified map results in a significant decrease in grading, which lessens impacts of the project, as I mentioned before, impacts to the hillside, air quality, and noise. The modified map does not include more lots than what was previously approved. The proposed modifications to the map would not prompt the need for a subsequent EIR pursuant to the sequel guidelines. Based on staff's review, all impacts related to the minor change were analyzed in the EIR and addendum, and no further environmental review is required. The previously prepared EIR and addendum are still accurate and acceptable for this approval. The project site is located within the hillside overlay area. The ordinance for slope, hillside, and ridgeline development does not apply to the proposed project, because projects within specific plans are exempt from those standards. This project was reviewed and recommended approval by our Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission. The commission had some comments. They had no comments on the design of the open space parks and interior local trails, as these were proposed for HOA maintenance. They asked that the applicant provide trail conceptual plans for the CFD Regional Trail along Lone Pine Drive and Sage Creek Way. This has been made a condition of approval per their request. They also asked that the applicant provide street crossing details at intersections of Lone Pine and Sage Creek Way. This also has been incorporated in the conditions of approval.
What do you mean by street crossing detail? You mean like a sign saying, "Trail goes here"?
Yeah, trail crossings.
Okay.
They also asked for a condition, that the applicant be conditioned to include equestrian height crossing signal buttons at Derby Hill and Newport, Brea and Newport, Getz and Newport, to provide safe access across Newport to the area south of the project site. The fourth request has not been added to the conditions of approval at this time. We have several reasons why we have not asked the applicant to do this. This application is a minor change. The changes proposed by the developer to the map are minor, and staff does not typically add requirements or improvements that were not part of the original approval or map unless the changes to the map triggered the new improvements or requirements, or if the requirement is for the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Also, there is an existing equestrian height signal crossing at the intersection of Newport and Derby Hill that was conditioned and installed for the Audi Murphy Ranch development. The location of the equestrian crossing was previously reviewed and approved by the city as part of a master trails plan for the surrounding Audi Murphy Ranch community. This is a logical location for the signal crossing, because the equestrian or multi-use trails in the area meet in this area, and there is no equestrian trail south of Newport Road and east of Derby Hill. The project is not adjacent to either the intersection of Getz and Newport or Brea and Newport, so asking them to install equestrian signal crossings is an off-site improvement. And typically, improvements are conditioned for streets and signals adjacent to a site and not off-site improvements unless the project has a negative impact to an off-site facility. So, we believe there is a lack of nexus for this project to provide those signal crossings at those intersections due to the project's location. Staff respectfully requests that the fourth request of the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission not be required as a condition of approval for this project. To go back to the location, this is an exhibit of the trails plan for the Audi Murphy Ranch project, and it also includes Canyon Cove. The orange trail along Getz is a ten-foot regional DG trail that could be used for horses. And then there's green trails through Salt Creek, and that is a fifteen-foot joint use trail and flood access road, or city if we maintain that. Sorry, and you can see the crossing is around where my arrow is, the bright pink. That's where there's the existing equestrian signal crossing. There are no equestrian trails south of Newport Road and east of that crossing. There is a DG trail along old Newport Road that connects to the park, but there's no convenient place for that trail to head south towards Newport. So adding that equestrian trail signal, or equestrian signal crossing at Newport and Brea doesn't quite make sense. And then the Newport and Getz, it's just very far off for this project, and this project is 198 lots. The Audi Murphy Ranch project, which is responsible for the installation of most of the trails you see here, that's 2,000 or slightly above 2,000 dwelling units. At this time, staff recommends adoption of Resolution PC 15216, finding that no additional environmental review is required for the project, and adoption of Resolution Number PC 15217, approving the minor change. This concludes staff presentation.
Okay, does the commissioner have any questions to staff?
I do. As a fairly new planning commissioner, what does DG stand for?
Decomposed granite.
Thank you.
That's what most of the trails you see around are made up, so. Commissioner Phillips, any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, while he's looking, I had one more question. If we approve this plan, the minor change, do they have the option to do the first one anyway, or does it change the approval?
I believe they could still do the first one.
Does this involve an extension at all, or anything?
No, the map's still valid.
This would be a change to the map, so they would have to go with this product and what this map would say at this point.
All right, so if we approve this, they can't say, you know, as it turns out, it wasn't a good idea, we're going to go back to the original approval. They can't do that, they have to stick with this one.
They would have to stick with this one, or they could come back to the planning commission and then ask for a revocation of the minor change, or an additional change at that point.
Thank you.
I would like to know who is Randy Allen. On page fourteen of the resolution, it says, this is dealing with environmental constraints, and it says this property was prepared by Randy Allen, and there was no title as to who Randy Allen is. I don't know who they are, I mean, that person is. Would like to recommend that the person's title or something that would identify them beyond just a name be included.
This condition was taken from the old track map, and it's what the county had previously conditioned the applicant for. Randy Allen would have been the biologist who prepared those reports that are listed there for biological resources.
Could we include that person's title? Is that a problem, or?
If I can find it, I will include the title.
All right, thank you. Other question, it was kind of tongue-in-cheek. On page fifteen, in the first paragraph, they were mentioning something called a maximum credible earthquake. Can that be translated into terms of the Richter scale, so that we can understand what that is?
That's, yeah, I don't have, I don't have an answer for you for that question there.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's a term that's used in this, and I don't know if, yeah, that can be turned, put into the Richter scale as to what that quantitative number that would be is what a maximum credible earthquake.
Right, that, it makes it very relative. I mean, the maximum of a credible earthquake could be two or three. It depends on the damage and the severity of the quake itself, as far as where it is. I just, I just thought the term was kind of vague.
It's probably some, and again, we can, we can look into what, if it's a, it's probably some sort of an accepted term in the industry as to what maximum credible is, but I don't have a definition for you or what that is at this point in time. Well, if we can find something, we'll let you know what that is.
Okay, thank you. And the last one is, I would like to recommend on page eighteen and nineteen, that stormwater conveyance systems, such as V ditches and culverts, shall be periodically inspected, cleaned of debris, trash, and plant growth to avoid developing habitats for rodents and insect vectors. This was based upon me looking at that site and comparing it with other sites. There's a possibility for standing water, which would provide haven for mosquitoes and what have you. And I would just like to see that added in, or something to that effect.
I have a definition for you now. Maximum credible earthquake is a earthquake definition, the largest earthquake that appears capable of occurring under the known tectonic framework for a specific fault or seismic source, as based on geological and seismic data, based on the maximum earthquake from analysis. So, basically, the biggest quake they think there's going to happen on that fault.
Okay.
Based on that definition, then I, it appears that that can change from area to area based on the faults in that area.
Right.
So that's why that term is probably used rather than a specific number.
Number, okay.
Anything else?
I just wanted to add in, or recommend that the stormwater conveyor systems be maintained, either by the HOA or somebody. We have a problem in some areas of the city where the stormwater conveyances are not maintained properly, and as a result, you've got everything from beer cans to extra-large Texas-sized mosquitoes in those places. We need to get them cleaned out, or else the conveyances won't work according to the design. So, I would just recommend that some kind of verbiage be put in to put some accountability for that kind of maintenance.
Is HOA responsible for that, or Riverside Flood?
On those, I don't know if those are, if they're just the V dish type, and they're in the HOA maintained areas, those are typically maintained by the HOA themselves. It wouldn't be Riverside Flood.
Is that something we already have an ordinance for?
I believe it's-
Is there a general ordinance that requires maintaining these types of passageways?
And I think it's actually as part of what the, and again, I'll defer to our engineering as well, but I think as part of our inspection of the project as it moves forward and is signed off on, we would be looking at those things as well to make sure initially that they are properly maintained.
He's worried about the ongoing-
And if there is others, then if there is an issue, I believe we could also go out there, and then if it's the responsibility of the homeowners association, or whoever's responsibility is at that point in time, then they would be responsible for taking care of maintaining, cleaning, removing debris, weeds, so on, in that area.
Yeah, so my question would be, is there something that code enforcement could enforce under existing law that would require that maintenance? If we got a complaint of a buildup of standing water and mosquitoes, is that something that we can enforce already?
Yeah, and there's also, yeah, that's, I believe, yes. To answer your question, yes. I believe that's, that's already available to us to do that in terms of an enforcement procedure.
Okay, and last is a typo. On page nine, item number two under SSR number 666, recommendations. I'd like to change internal angel to internal angle.
For the record, Angel of Friction's a good band name.
I'll leave that alone. And that's on page nine.
Lisa, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Or questions, I should say.
Well, for staff, I just, for engineering, I just, with the change in the grading, just wanted to, I kind of read over the engineering, just the slopes, the changes, and just, you feel comfortable with, with the changes that have been made?
Yeah, actually-
Their safety?
Yeah, we are, and actually, when they come in for a formal application for the grading plan, all of the slopes, especially the ones that are steeper, or two to one, would be examined closely. They need to, we will make sure that they comply with the existing standards that we have for grading and for, for the building code.
Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all I have for staff.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
The, really, the only question I have is on page thirty-six on the Quimby fees. Which, are they going to be dictated by three acres, or the five acre requirement?
Five.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll open the public hearing at 7:24. Was this properly noticed, Jen? And have we received any correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay, and is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? What's that? Yeah, we can go ahead and do that, yeah. Mr. Peters?
Just the arrows. Okay. How's everyone doing this evening?
Good.
Good evening. I'm Adrian Peters with Brookfield Residential, and I'm extremely happy to be here this evening. My presentation's going to be relatively brief, available mostly to answer any questions or clarifications. Essentially, just wanted to reiterate some of the key points that Lisa brought up, and I want to sincerely thank her, Yolanda, Jonathan, Bob, and the rest of the staff on a very, very thorough analysis. We think that she hit on the key points, which is essentially that this is a significantly environmentally superior project. We have less grading, substantially less grading in this plan than we had previously. The limits of grading are significantly reduced. It's more environmentally sensitive. It meets the contours of the land more closely. There was one significant change that was not mentioned in the report that we evaluated with our landscape architects, and that was, a lot of times, and this is very common in Riverside County, when there's slopes behind people's rear yards, the slopes are quite often landscaped and irrigated by the individual homeowners. And what that means is that these slopes are irrigated with domestic potable water. And so what we chose to do with this redesign is to convert those slopes, as much as we could, into the ownership of the HOA, so that they could be serviced with reclaimed water. And the change was significant. We went, basically, having about 800,000 of the 900,000 square feet being potable water, and we effectively reversed those numbers around. So, EMWD was very happy to see that. We're very happy to see that. Conservation is a very, very important aspect of any land planning effort these days. So, this change allowed us to reconfigure some lot lines, get those slopes out of backyards and into the HOA. Lisa mentioned there's more usable open space, so not only are these slopes now under the control of the HOA, but we've actually increased the amount of usable open space that could be used by the future residents of this area. Our civil engineers also managed to redesign the plan in a way that the lot number stays the same, but the number of streets, the actual square footage of streets to service these lots is actually reduced, so there's less construction. Again, they're the same number of lots, it's the same project, it's as previously proposed. We still have the regional and local trails. We'd be happy to comply with all the conditions relative to the design and the standards relative to the regional trail specifications. And so I asked, I asked for your affirmative vote this evening on this project. Again, I think it's a much better plan. I asked my engineer, gee, why didn't you come up with this plan five or eight years ago? But there's reasons for it. We did some geotechnical investigation and found out that there were some substantially large rocks under the ground between the depths of 50, 80, 100 feet that would have required some significant blasting that would have increased the cost of the grading by about $4 million, and would have required us to haul off hundreds of thousands of yards of rock material, perhaps across Salt Creek or some other place. So, basically, instead of cutting into the slope about 80 feet, we're only going down about 25 or 30 feet to avoid the rocks. And so, we think that's a great solution. We're filling less, we're cutting less, and so again, I think it's a far better plan. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions. If you want to know how big the houses are, I'd be happy to give you some insight on that. But again, looking for your affirmative vote this evening, I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, or the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
One question about the housing designs. I drove through the Audi Murphy, all of that developed areas. I noticed you already have the purple pipe over there, so you're in good shape there, as far as I'm concerned. The housing designs on the existing lots, are they going to be continued as far as style is concerned? Or are you bringing in a whole new design feature?
Well, if you- Well, if you're familiar with the initial Woodside Project, Simran and Laredo, that were designed probably ten years ago and built, say, five years ago, our architecture that we're moving forward with is gonna be, we think, better. We're going to emphasize more single-story elements and better design qualities. We think that people that are moving to Menifee these days are looking for great design as well as great value, and they don't just want a box. And so we're very, very cognizant of that because we're competing with quite a number of projects in southwest Riverside County. Right now, there's seventy-seven active projects for sale. So on any given Saturday, somebody that's looking for a house, they have seventy-seven places to go. And we would like for those people to come and visit Audi Murphy Ranch. And one of the ways to get them here is to have really awesome architecture at a segmentation, size, if you will, and a design quality that they say, hey, this is pretty awesome. I want to live here at Audi Murphy. I want to live in Menifee. So we're very, very conscious of that. You can't just build a cheap box and expect people to come and buy the home. You have to really raise your game. And so we're really putting a lot of thought into that. And so the the builders are not yet determined yet who they are. But there's probably gonna be two different builders because it's hard for one builder to come in and do one hundred and ninety-eight lots. We'll probably do one builder on the lower lots and one builder on the higher lots. And we'll probably know who those folks are probably in December. And so we'll get a real good flavor of of what they're gonna bring to the table probably later this fall.
Are you going to include multi-generational style homes in that area?
That they're not planted this time for Canyon Cove.
Okay, thanks.
Lisa?
Mr. Peters, thank you so far. Audi Murphy has just built a really quality development. And so it looks like Canyon Cove will be one of those. I do have a question. Is there, looking at the open spaces, is, now, I heard that there will be barbecues and picnic tables. I didn't see any play equipment on any of them. Is there a reason why that is not, there is no?
Well, that's that's a great, great comment. The public park with the large tot lot is literally Catta Corner from Canyon Cove. It's walking distance. So for those that have strollers and small kids.
You're talking about Spirit Park?
No, Audi Murphy Sports Park.
Oh, the sports park. Can you pull that up?
Yeah.
Can you pull that map up?
Oh, right there, okay.
Yeah, you can, you can see it. It's in the northeast corner of the project. So we we've timed the walk from the gate to the park, and it's like one minute. So we're pretty confident that what the sports park adds is a lot of the active areas. You've got the the large tot lot. You've got the sports fields. You've got large picnic areas for big birthday parties. Our parks are, this is a little bit different than the other tracks at Audi Murphy Ranch, where if you go through the existing subdivisions, you don't see little pocket parks. And this kind of hearkens back to the days when neighborhoods actually had a little half-acre park here, a half-acre park here, a one-acre park here. So just neighbors on that street could have a little place to congregate. And so we think that that's gonna be a fun little addition to the project. And then they can always walk across the street to the sports park to do the more active uses.
I am, I just would like to see in one of those to have like a children's play gym. I don't know if if you'd consider it. It's just a question.
The park to the far, the most south here.
Just a question, I, you know, just knowing younger families. And where even where my, I have three adult children. I'll have, I have all the little grandkids. And they really enjoy them being just right down their, on their street. But I mean, if you'd, if you'd consider it, if you don't, I understand that, too.
I tell you what, I tell you what, Lisa, I'll make you a promise. Does this have the laser pointer? All right, there you go. Ah, it doesn't show on the TV. Okay. The, in a short period of time, we are gonna come in with the plans for those open space lots that are gonna go through planning for review. And the larger open space lot that's kind of in the central right of the plan, we're gonna come in with something really cool there. So that will be a planning commission discretionary review. And we're not far enough along with it at this point to give you any details or promises. But probably, you know, within thirty days, staff is gonna have something to look at.
Okay.
And then we'll come back before you guys, and I think you're gonna like what we have in mind.
All right.
But that's not just administrative, though, Lisa?
That would most likely be administrative.
That's what I'm saying. Could you at least informationally bring it to us rather than on a?
All administrative approvals are are emailed to you for your review, and we can provide an update.
Okay, if you just put it on the agenda to have a picture for it. We get a lot of those administrative reviews coming through, so if you could. Or is that, is that a cost item?
Well, no, we, what we can do is we'll just kind of, we'll separate it out and we'll we'll note it so you'll, it'll stand out from what's the the regular process.
And I just want to thank you for the water conservation, this using the reclaimed water. What a great thing that you're you're doing there. That was a great example for the rest of the builders that maybe even come in here to consider those types of things, so thank you.
Thank, you're very welcome. In fact, we've been learning quite a bit about water conservation. And oftentimes, people in the public say, why are you letting all these new homes come in? It's, they're using up too much water. Actually, the opposite's the case. The homes today that we're building are using about a third of the amount of water that homes built ten or twenty years ago we're using. And so the district has great policies to convert your rear yard grass into zero scape at two bucks a foot credit. The district can also give you a free toilet exchange, showerhead exchanges, faucet exchanges. Retrofitting new houses in California, if every house in California at least ten years old retrofitted all their fixtures, eight point seven percent of our water problem would be solved in California. And so we're trying to do our best to be as green as possible on the housing side as well as on the open space landscape side. And and I think that you folks up there ought to keep encouraging developers to go the reclaimed route and go with high-efficiency energy products.
I was impressed at the dedication of the Twymon Street, the models, the way that they used zero scape and, you know, just conscious conscious of that, of the drought tolerant type of plant. So it looks like you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mark?
No, not really a question, more of a comment, but for the large open space park, can we try to grade that as flat as we can? Just so that people can play on it?
Yes, it 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 will be, it will be very flat at the end of the day. The the lots to the south of it are a few feet higher. The lots to the north of it are a few feet lower. But the the pad itself is gonna be sheet graded, really flat. And again, we have some pretty cool ideas about what we're gonna be putting in there. And we'll definitely bring staff on board and keep you guys informed of that.
Yeah, just, you go to some parks with a big open space like that, and it's got a decent incline that can't play soccer or kickball or anything on.
No, we're, we're, we're very.
That was a waste.
Yeah, we're trying to be, even though smaller pocket parks are gonna be.
Two percent?
We do need, we do need a park we can do ice blocking on.
If you missed that, Lisa made a recommendation for an ice blocking park.
I don't know.
We'll have, as you guys know, on the, on the Spirit Park, we are gonna have a a multipurpose court that could be conceivably used for roller hockey or any number of of outdoor uses. It's sort of gonna have a flexible space to it, so we're pretty excited about that.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Yes, I do have a couple. I noticed on the plan here that's on the screen, you have four fire accessways that are all on the south. And I was wondering, I'm not familiar with fire accesses, but I was just wondering why there are none up in these areas to the north.
They're just access to the open space, right?
Oh, just to the open.
Now they are?
Yeah, it's fuel modification access.
Ooh.
Yeah, we don't want any fires in those hills, so we're, we need to make sure that the HOA can get back there to thin it out and keep it clean and.
All right, thank you.
There's no other questions? Is there any public testimony?
Yes, sir. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
You should. You're living in Never Neverland.
Can you please state your name, where you live?
Mrs. Miller, Postbox, Elsinore. You're taking my time away. What trivial insignificant goals, barbecues and birthday parks, birthday pocket parks? We aren't there. We are trying to decrease the heat coming off this planet, trying to not produce microbursts. The high winds that came across the college, MSJC, and knocked the poles down. Where are you? More to Canyon Cove and Audi Murphy on Railroad Canyon? The traffic will be insurmountable, the potential of seven hundred people all draining water, stressing waste hole and sewage, schools and parks. There is no water for any more homes in Riverside County. We have one year left of drinkable water. Come out of your fairy land. Developers say they can build with thirty percent water efficiency, but we have to increase, decrease by fifty percent our water. Create jobs by bringing up current residences to water efficiency and energy independence. Stop your development. Stop your bulldozing. Think another way, especially these planners. They're in Neverland. They just want to work with these developers like nothing can happen, like tornadoes can't come through this place. We've never had any, I've lived here that long, and we've had six in the last four years. They just don't get publicized enough. I don't care about your token open space and trails. The Canyon Cove homes with water-draining people who overcrowd the stores, the after-school programs, the sports, the events, the heat rising from the concrete will contribute to environmental degradation. How dare him use the word environment? I am the angel of friction. Twenty-three hundred people in India have died of extreme heat at a hundred and twenty degrees. Every blade, how many of you heard about that? You don't know that? A hundred and twenty degrees? It was a hundred and thirteen degrees in Wildemar two years ago on the Fourth of July. Every blade of dirt turned by bulldozer operators releases CO2. We are at four hundred parts per million of CO2 per liter, which is melting, melting both of the poles and sending the ocean into Miami. How many of you know about that? Water up in the streets of Miami. Do not adopt PC fifteen two sixteen. For God's sake, EIR fourteen, twenty years ago, what lies?
Ms. Miller? Thank you.
The keynote checkerspot butterfly and all the vegetation it feeds on, it could be there. The California poppy.
I have no further speakers, sir.
Does the applicant have anything further you'd like to respond to all those points?
I I actually have one question. The the Spirit Park, I know this is not related to the specific project, but since you're here, Spirit Park is part of your your universe, right?
Correct.
The space to the north of Spirit Park, behind those large boulders there, is is that part of your property?
No, no, it's not.
So the the line where where the road is going, the new road behind Spirit Park, that's where the end of your property is?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll close the public hearing at seven forty-three. And do we have any discussion on the diocese from the commission? Yay, nay, comments, anything?
One quick question. Did you guys ever resolve that problem between the Saboba Band and?
Yeah, address that.
Pachanga, you know, oh, sorry about that.
There is no issue. Pachanga has monitored the grading in this area and on this property since they started grading in two thousand and six or seven? Two thousand and four. And there are existing monitoring agreements with Pachanga that the developer is honoring.
Okay, I was just wondering because one of the meetings we had, both tribes were present, and there seemed to be a lot of animated discussion, particularly about Audi Murphy West, north of Normandy.
Because existing agreements were in place since two thousand and four with the Pachanga tribe, we honored those agreements to allow them to monitor.
So there's no hiccups there as far as?
Not, not for these tracks, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, if there's any other discussion, if we don't have any discussion, then we'll go ahead. Do we have a motion to approve or disapprove these items?
I move that we adopt resolution number PC one five dash two one six, finding that no additional environmental review is required based upon the findings and conclusions incorporated in the staff report.
We'll just do it one at a time.
Okay.
Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call?
Commissioner Doty?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes. Do we have a, do we have a motion for a PC fifteen two seventeen?
Yes, I'd like to recommend, excuse me, we adopt resolution number PC one five dash two one seven, approving manner change number two zero one five dash zero two eight, subject to the attached modifier conditions of approval for tentative track map number three two zero two five, and based upon the findings and conclusions incorporated in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Doty?
Yes.
Commissioner Carwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips? Vice Chair Sobek?
Yes.
Chair Thomas?
Yes. So you have a project. Okay, then, we don't have any discussion items. Mr. Development Director, could we have any comments?
Just, just one, I just wanted a comment. The memorial service for Councilman Edgerton will be at Paloma Valley High School Theater on Thursday, June eighteenth at five thirty PM. And that is open to the public, so everyone who would like to attend is invited.
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it. Do the commissioners have any comments or anything to bring up at this time?
Yes. I would like to disclose that I met with the developer, Mr. Peters, on the twentieth of May at eight o'clock at Coco's, and we discussed this project. The, perhaps the main thing that we discussed was some geotechnical stuff and the size of the houses on those small lots. And he assured me that they were going to be sellable and not an inconvenience. Nor, I guess, if you want to apply the term, the stigma of of what they call affordable, this whole tract is not oriented that way.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, you know what? Actually, that made me think. I ran into Mr. Peters when I was at the dedication of the Twymon Street. And he just mentioned to me about the grading change. They were coming before us, so it was it.
I have a question, totally unrelated off the subject. It was just, it struck me the other day. By Paloma Valley High School, across Holland, there's that giant pit.
Tension basin?
Yeah, is, is there anything that the city is planning to improve the perimeter of that? Because there's a wall on one side, and then the side that faces the high school is a chain-link fence, and it looks ridiculous.
It's not only that, the kids will, some kids go under that after school gets out, and they hang out under there. Don't know what they're doing, but.
Studying, of course.
So I was, I was just wondering if the city had any short- or long-term plans relating to that basin to maybe improve it or conceal it?
At the, at this time, I'm not aware of any, you know, for that. I believe that's Riverside County flood controls responsibility. And and that is something that, as you know, that we're looking at with with tracks because that is one that continues to come up as as an example. And there are concerns with that. So future projects, we are very aware of that as well in terms of how to address those kinds of basins or those kinds of facilities because they they can have an impact on the community. But as far as I know, that's, we can look into that further. I don't have an answer for you right now, but I believe that's Riverside County flood control. for you right now, but I believe that's Riverside County Flood Control's responsibility in there. But at this point, the city doesn't have, yeah, the city doesn't have any project or anything to landscape or beautify that area at this time.
I was, I was more concerned with the, the sidewalk that runs along Holland Road across from the high school, there's, there's just a chain-link fence there, and I don't know, is that our property or is that county property that the fence is on?
If, if it's, the, the area up to it may be the public right-of-way is part of, ultimately be part of Holland, and if that's fully improved, typically where a sidewalk would be placed in there as well as part of the improvements. But I, I don't know if there's any plan or what the schedule would be for that.
No, thank you.
I had one question on the school, the school office right here, there's that big old mound of dirt, are they going to export all that dirt, or are they going to work it back into the project?
I'll refer, defer to our engineering staff, Yolanda.
Doesn't work for me, okay. Yeah, they're actually just stockpiling that dirt, and eventually, at the end of the project, or at the end of the grading, that will all be gone.
Oh, so they have a high amount of export?
Right, they do.
And what was the, they're only developing like two-thirds of it, this, this northern part, what is that going to be, just a pavement, pavement or gravel and a parking or what's it?
It's not part of the project, and probably Lisa would have more information on the plan for the northern portion.
I don't recall if they were going to treat it with hydroseed or just leave it natural, but I can check and shoot an email off.
Sure, just wondering.
Yeah. The only thing I know is that the, all the parkway along Han or, yeah, Hub Road, that's going to be landscaped with trees and parkways.
Even the northern, this head?
Even the northern part that is facing us right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Just like, if we know how, if you're allowed to share how Stater Brothers is, if it's moving forward at all?
On Newport and Menifee?
On Newport and Menifee.
Litigation's still ongoing at this point. I can disclose that the city has filed a motion to dismiss the lawsuit because.
Sequel suit?
It is a sequel lawsuit, and the Diamond Brothers attorneys did not file a request for hearing within the time allotted by the Public Resources Code. So we're in the process of dealing with that, and potentially, the case could be dismissed in a couple of weeks, but it's still a little bit early to tell.
Okay, thank you.
And Stater Brothers has submitted their final parcel map to our engineering department for processing, and they've also submitted their minor plot plan for the outdoor seating areas to the community development department. I'll check the conditions.
I think I, I specifically requested, I wanted to see the, the seating area.
I'll, I'll check the condition.
Okay.
And just thank you, Lisa, for that, that was a good report.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, re-adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.